The City Council was called to order at 3:36 PM. Ms. Ruby Cohen, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Mrs.? Pledge of Allegiance, please? You don't want to do that? Okay, we could call us up. The City Clerk, please, go ahead and do that. Can you get us the cards, if there are any? Also, but the roll call first, please?
Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Protem Manning. And Mayor Vargas.
Here.
Okay. All right. Oral communications, please? Can you talk, uh, give us the guidelines, please?
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, the public should directly address the legislative body concerning items that have been described in the notice of special meeting.
Okay. I have no cards. Is there anybody wanting to speak on the item for today? Go ahead, you raise your hand. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Hello, everyone. Name is Gordon Michael Migo, native and resident of Hawthorne since October 8, 1952. Yeah, I've been looking at, you know, this, you know, charter issue, you know, various cities that, you know, have it up and down the state and all that. It can be, you know, good and bad, all dependent on how, you know, the language, you know, that is in, you know, the text of what is basically a city constitution and all that. So essentially that, what people kind of feel, you know, the feedback that I get is that just nowadays, whether it's city, county, state, you know, national level, that people don't really have a lot of confidence in their elected and appointed officials these days. And so they're kind of wary as to whenever there's major changes being done in their name. And so there needs to be a go-slow approach, kind of like a very wary, you know, thoughtful process. And that, a lot of this needs to be brought forward, you know, to the people, you know, well before you finalize, you know, any language that will go for the text, the place before the voters in November, if you're going to do that. The one thing is that the reason, one of the reasons that the last charter city measure that was voted down, namely, had to do with salary. And quite honestly, that, any language that would be in a chartered city, simply there should be no dollar figure actually there. It has to be like a separate thing that is brought before the voters, you know, whether at the same time. And you provide the people two or three or four different income levels. They can pick one of the others or none of the above. And if they pick none of the above, then of course, well, then you're going to have to ask the people and say, well, what do you want? And so there's, like I said, it's neither good nor bad. It all depends on how it's written, who's writing it and all that. People have a lot of concerns about their elected and appointed officials these days. And so I kind of tread the middle ground and I keep my, my mind open and look at it, but yeah. I, and I kind of think about the situation of Huntington Beach that is now being taken to task by our governor, you know, whenever, it's supposed to be like the city constitution over there. And they're complaining about voter ID and that is vote suppression, which is a bunch of garbage. Everybody can get voter ID and if you provide it to them for free. And that's, you know, basically the bone of contention down there. So we need to be very smart, very diligent, and get a lot of input from the people.
Sir? Thank you, many of you know me. My name is Guy Hocker. I've been up there, been enjoying it. And not quite agreeing with Gordon. I think everybody in this entire city appreciates the honor and the privilege that you have here at this dais. And we respect it 100%. I don't believe anybody's pointing over here and pointing over here. As evidenced by newspaper article, Taking Care of Business Every Day came out today, especially on this bulletin, or on the business bulletin, business meetings that Olivia has started many years ago. Darn good article. So exactly what is happening today? I have the discussion, consulting attorney for a draft charter. Would you please explain what that is? What is, are they going to draft, make a charter and put it in the ballot to vote? Or is this something that has to be voted on? It's double, double entendre here, draft charter. Is this the, what is it for? What is the meeting for right now? Maybe I should, you're correct.
During oral communications, it's not a, it's not a question and answer session. It's oral communications, so the council cannot answer you.
I'm sorry, would you speak a little louder? I can't hear.
Yes, it's oral communications, it's not a question and an answer. You could just make a comment, but you know.
I'm well aware of that. What is the issue at hand? Is that, is that a valid question? What is the issue that I can address?
The agenda item is a selection of a consultant or an attorney to help the council draft the charter.
Okay, is that draft charter before it goes to the vote?
Okay, again, so I can't, I'll just answer this. I could just answer this. The council has to agree on the language of the charter before it could go to the ballot measure.
Okay, that's a good enough answer.
Okay.
I'll take that. Thank you again. Okay, well, I'm here certainly because I don't believe in changing what we have. And I saw what was put in the ballot before. And it didn't pass, of course. And I see that there was no noes. Nobody put noes in there. How do I, how do I put no on the ballot? Maybe I can answer that. Somebody can answer that. Nobody can answer? How do I put my name on here? No, vote no. Who do, then I should ask? Mr. Mayor, who should I ask?
After the meeting, we'll connect you with the city attorney.
Yes, I could talk to you after the meeting.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, I'll pass this out right now to... Could I pass this up to the dais, please? Give me one of them back, would you? These are the former elected officials that have all indicated their no vote. And they wish to be noted as no votes. And I'm sorry I took so long. And the only other issue I'll bring up is that this.
Sorry, sir, your time is up.
Thank you. I got it. Didn't know I could talk so much. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. Olivia Valentine, former city council member. Greetings, everyone. Good afternoon, Mayor, city council members, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, Madam City Clerk. I am joining the letter in opposition to the city charter. When we first considered having a city charter, we spent a lot of time with the language and we spent a lot of time talking about why we needed one. And we thought at the time that it was going to have some impact on the number of bills that, housing bills that were coming at us left and right, including SB 9 and SB 10. So we wanted to have, we wanted to have local control to try and control the impact of some of those bills. But we soon realized that the state had another idea. So in all of those bills, all of those housing bills, they have put in there, this is a matter of statewide concern, which means that even if you want to have city, if you, if you want to have text in your city, in your, in your city documents of any kind, you're not going to be able to override that state, the state laws, because they've already said it's a matter of statewide concern. So I feel that being able to join a lawsuit, which is the only thing we could do to try and blunt the impact of those bills, is join the lawsuit that the other charter cities have. That would be the only way that we could maybe have some impact. But the lawsuit may not be successful. And even if, and if the lawsuit is successful, we'll get the benefit of it anyway. So I honestly do not see a reason for us to have a charter city. I, I do not see a reason, so I am in opposition to it. Thank you.
Any more speakers? Is that it? Okay, no more speakers? All right. So I'll declare oral communications closed, so ordered. City Council, City Council Discussion Action Item, Councilmember Montero, selection of consultant attorney for the draft charter. Councilmember Montero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming on this Friday afternoon. So basically, you know, this meeting is to give the city manager authorization to hire a consultant or a lawyer to begin working with the council and possibility with, with an ad hoc committee that will involve the council and citizens of Hawthorne and our staff to begin drafting a language that would, could be acceptable by the full council and also by the public when we, because we have to do two public hearings before anything can be on the ballot. So just to address a little bit about the issue of the charter city. We have been seeing a lot of these other cities that has been, you know, that is a charter city are doing a lot of economic develop to benefit the residents and its population. So we've seen Hawthorne have not been able to do all these economic develop and take advantage of what's happening in some other charter cities. And I agree with, with Ms. Valentine that when we put the charter city on the ballot, and I was against it, it was because of that $75,000 salary. But I'm have to, I will make you a pledge that this charter city will not have salaries on, on it. And our intention is to make sure that we protecting the city, protecting the laws that we can create, protecting our constitutional, municipal constitution. Because there is a lot of laws coming from Sacramento that is interfering in our government. And Ms. Valentine also is correct that the housing issue, the state has said is a state mandate. But there is lawsuits going on against the states to stop the state to interfere with local government. And when you see the trend, especially the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court have been saying that the government is interfering in our local ability to govern. Okay? So I can say that probably those lawsuits, if they go to Supreme Court, they might win. Because we see a trend, what the Supreme Court has been voting on, that is stopping the government, especially the federal government, and especially some states that, you know, that are making laws to interfere with our local government policies. So I know the charter city is a very hot topic because it was defeated two years ago. And again, it was because of that salary. Because I said that we are part-time and we not deserve a full-time employment, a salary of 75,000 or even kind of salary. So the charter city that we're going to try to draft, the new language, the new language that's going to go on the ballot, not that old language from two years ago. And it's going to be approved by the city of Hawthorne before it goes on that ballot. Because we're going to have public hearing. We're going to have discussion here. So we're going to make it a draft that is going to be able for people to understand and maybe to vote on it. And believe it or not, I already began doing some research and I asked some of my colleagues in Sacramento and even some local government to give us all the bills that the state have passed for these past two years that is interfering with the local government. It's not just housing or zoning and land use. It's other issues. Okay? Because I'm pretty sure that Mr. Guy Hocker, the former mayor, or Ms. Valentine do not wants to see a apartment building in Holly Park or in Holly Glen. But if the state has his way, they can put a 50 or 100 unit apartment at Holly Glen, Holly Park, Ramona Track, Boja Park. And that is what we're trying to prevent. So wake up and smell the coffee. Because it's a new dawn that we need to protect the city. We need to protect our constitution. And that is my main objective. It's not about salary. It's not about rotation of mayor. It's economic develop and to protect us in the future. And the city, we need to do more when it comes to economic develop. And I know some of, some of my colleagues would say, oh, no, it's because we can still do it. But, but there is some laws on the books that hint us to make or expedite permits, for example, or SecW or some other stuff. And that is why sometimes, you know, some developers say Hawthorne is a hot place to do business with. And that's why we didn't, we don't see so five stadiums in state of Hawthorne. We didn't see soccer stadium in SecW Hawthorne. We didn't see the Clippers stadium in Hawthorne. We didn't see the Lakers facilities training in Hawthorne. But they're all around us. So I have to tell you, for me, it's not about my pocketbook. It's not about my future. It's the future of Hawthorne that I'm watching. The future of our children that's going to be here for decades to come. So again, today is for just to give the city manager authorization to hire someone. And I'm going to, I do not want our city attorney to be excluding on this process. Because Mr. Robert King is a great city attorney and, and he has my 1,000% confidence. So I want him to be part of that selection with, with our city manager. And I'll stop for there and open the floor to my colleagues.
Do the cheer. So I, I would like to express my support of what the council member just, just mentioned. The charter was on the ballot two years ago and it was very clear that it wasn't supported because of the compensation aspect that was on there. And, and I, I think I have enough sense to be able to learn, you know, from what people are saying and from past experiences. And I, I also have no intention of adding kind of changes to the council's compensation on any kind of proposed charter to, to go before the people. My interest in Hawthorne being a charter city is two-fold. One, like our city attorney said at the last meeting, it restricts the power of the council, right? And empowers the voters. And so I'm a big believer in empowering our voters in our community. And that's one thing having a charter does. But not just that, it does give us economic development opportunities that we don't yet have. Years ago, Councilmember Ron Tero had the idea of using eminent domain to take the mall, finally take the mall, do something with it. And it was hard to get behind that because as a general law city, we have to use it for public benefit if we took something by eminent domain. So we have to turn it into a park, right? So that wouldn't make any sense at all. But as a charter city, we could take the mall and use it for economic development purposes. Inglewood just did that when building the, the whole complex for the Clippers Stadium. Did it very quickly, too. Took some land and included it in economic development project. I remember that stood out in my mind because we've been sitting on eminent domain forever because we thought that we couldn't use it for economic development purposes. But the reason why they were able to, because they're a charter city. And so I believe economic development is something that we ought to take very, very seriously. And we need to give ourselves all the tools to do so. The city attorney, not the city attorney, the city manager put together a recommendation of about four attorneys that we can use to help draft the charter. I believe a few of them came from our city attorney. And looking at him, he made a recommendation that the first, the first one on this list probably had the most extensive background. And which is? Enz and Watley. Three names, Enz and Watley, I don't know. How do you say these names?
The firm that I think you're speaking of is Colangelo, Hill Smith, or excuse me, High Smith and Watley.
So, I mean, I addressed our city manager's recommendation, but I also was very impressed by the gentleman that gave a presentation to the city council last month, Scott Rafferty. He seemed to be very, very knowledgeable in that respect. So I, I would like to propose that we, we choose that first company as our first choice with Mr. Rafferty as a, as a backup. And, you know, engage them and see if they can meet our needs. We have a very tight schedule. If we're, were to put something before the council to vote on and for the people. And so I don't want to have to have a bunch more meetings, selection meetings. So I would just go with the, the top choice, but I also would want to keep Mr. Rafferty as a backup for whatever reason. So that's my, so I move that. That's what we do as far as selection.
All right, please vote.
Councilmember Reyes English, oh, perfect. Votes are in. The voting reflects council voting yes, Mayor Vargas voting no.
All right, let's see, let's take a look. All right, so I guess that's the vote? All right, go ahead.
Just, just, I do not want our city attorney, Robert King, to be exclude, you know, Vaughn, make sure that he's part of the committee, okay?
Noted.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. As you guys saw, I mean, we have like three council members that are here and another one that's not here that are just determined to get this back on the, on the ballot. It's a ruse, what you're hearing today. Oh, I'm not going to have salaries on it. Oh, it's for economic development. Oh, for this. It's not going to take away power from you. It's, it's, it's not about salaries. It is about all those things. Let's get it passed. Let's hire a consultant that's not the city attorney so they can craft the careful wording so that it will pass this time. So in a sense, it's like a campaign already starting to try to get this thing passed. The voters decided like about 18 months ago that this was not a good idea for the city. It's an insult to you guys, for the residents, for you to be constantly be told that, oh, it's about a salary. Like you can't read language and you don't know what charter is and that you don't remember what happened in the city of Bell. I think Mr. Gordon Migo touched on it. The residents don't trust. The residents don't trust cities because of the city of Bell. The city of Bell, do you trust everybody in this council? That's why you have the choice to elect or take people off of this council every election. Okay? And I can tell you that this is a ruse. Salaries will come up. If they don't show up on this ballot, on the ballot with respects to the charter, it can easily come up in the following meetings and possibly even be assigned and chosen. You know, it's all about salaries. Economic development? This city needs to do much more about economic development. Oh, we could have had the SoFi Stadium. Those are big words. Those are fancy words to convince you how much we need it because of economic development. Again, that's a ruse. We're a successful city. We have been. We've increased about one hundred and forty percent when it comes to our balance, cash balance for the city. If saying that we need this because we haven't been economically successful is not a testament to our form of government. It's a testament to the people on this council who haven't been doing, haven't been doing a job. It's a self-verdict. They're assessing their production and instead of focusing on the city, getting things done, hiring a consultant to solve problems like the homelessness issue, hiring a consultant to figure out the affordable housing, instead they're spending it on a consultant to try to get this language passed. Okay? And I want to remind you guys that you voted it down sixty-one percent to thirty-nine percent. It's not going to change. It's going to be worse. No matter what you worded, no matter how much people are trying to tell you that you didn't know what you were doing when you voted at sixty-one percent, thirty-nine percent, we're going to help you see that you didn't know what you were doing. So, we're going to bring it back again. And let's not be fooled. You have somebody's mouthpiece over here. We have Councilmember Patterson that at least ten, eleven, twelve times has brought this thing up before the council. The first time when it came up and continuously after it failed trying to get it back on. Now, he's using Councilmember Montero as a mouthpiece. Maybe because somebody's running for reelection. They don't want to get stained by this thing. I don't know. You be the judge. But you guys remember, you guys don't have a short-term memory. You guys remember what's been happening. So, proof of how, proof of how bad this whole thing is, is this meeting at this odd hour, three-thirty P.M. Our timeline that I examined still gives us time to put this at a regular meeting and let more people hear about this, more people see what's going on. But instead, they decided to do the three-thirty meetings where people, I couldn't even make it, barely make it out of work. I had to leave early to make it here. So, the residents know better. And again, I'm going to keep reminding you and telling you exactly what's happening as it happens. And this thing is going, we're going to ask you, I'm asking you to let sure that everybody, make sure that everybody knows to vote no on this charter. Because this is just sickening. It's an embarrassment. It's a definition of insanity to be doing this thing over and over again, like they say, and expecting different results. I'm disappointed, but let the, what do you call it, the chips fall where they may. And as I told you, I will remind the voters and you, the residents, who on this council supported this and voted for it, to place it again, to insult you thinking that you guys don't know what you're doing. It's going to be a no on charter on my part all the way through. Thank you. Sure, go ahead.
Well, so first of all, I have to say, you know, I'm a man of integrity. Nobody use me. I see things how it should be done correctly with common sense. And I have to tell you that if this new ballot, the language goes on the ballot for November twenty-two, I will assure you that there will be no council member in three months or the following meetings that's come back here to ask for salaries. Because I'm going to put on that charter that if that, that has to go back to the voters to vote on. You, the people, would make that decision if you want to give anybody salaries in this council. Not this council, not the three members, not the four votes. Okay? And when Mr. Mayor talks about economic development, believe me, myself and Councilmember Patterson is the one who's been on ad hoc committee for economic development for these past four years. We, the one, myself and Mr. Patterson is the one who has gone to conference, to lobby for business to come to Hawthorne. If somebody's not doing their job, they should look at the mirror. Because I do one that's twenty-four-seven out there lobbying for the city. I just came from San Jose, three days. And the city didn't pay for my plane ticket or my hotel. But I was there with seven hundred and fifty people with business that came from Korea, China, India, all there talking about future of California, future of city like Hawthorne. So, this charter city, I'm telling you, it's not about me. It's not about Mr. Mayor. It's not about David Patterson. It's not about Ms. English and not about Ms. Manning. And I'm going to make sure it's about the people of Hawthorne, the power that you will have. And I'm going to explain all the voters. And I'm going to do town hall meeting. If it goes on the ballot, I'm going to tell them why the pros and cons. And then they make the decision. If they vote no, they'll vote no. And they vote yes, they'll vote yes on a product that's going to benefit the people of Hawthorne for many years to come. It's not about people trying to protect what they have or the titles. For me, it's what you have delivered to the city. And if you do your homework, you will see who's been there twenty-four-seven, working with the staff, helping the staff. So, don't be fooled by just this because say, no, 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 no. And again, and I have to remind you, two years ago, three people voted to put this on the ballot with the salary when myself and Ms. Valentine saw that that was not going to pass by Hawthorne residents because you were not fooled. So, again, so you're going to have the power to tell us where you want this city to go. The state as a status quo? Not to grow? Not the business will not come here because we have stringing laws? Mandates by the state? By general law? So, you have to, you know, like I said, wake up and smell the coffee. It's not about us. Because like I said, it's the future of children in the city. Because in four, twelve years, none of us would be here. Because we have term limits. So, think about that, too. So, I myself will tell you, I'll put everything in your hands. But I'm going to be honest with you and be transparent. And not use scare tactics. Because you know better. And this meeting, believe it or not, we didn't have to have this meeting. Mr. Vaughn, our city manager, had the discrepancy to hire somebody because if it was less than twenty-five thousand dollars, he could hire anybody he wants. But we wanted to be transparent. And that's what this meeting was called. But we didn't have to have it. But I said, we have to have the meeting. Because make sure that we're doing everything in the clear. So, people don't think that we're doing deals behind their backs. So, believe it or not, I was elected to be a servant of the people and I have done that. And I'll continue to do that to protect the city. Because I live here. I'm a homeowner. I'm teaching young children how to become good citizens. And that's why I want to leave them a legacy to make sure that this city strive. Thank you.
Okay.
To the chair.
Real quick, I'm going to respond because I don't know about you, but I don't like being insulted. I personally don't like being insulted. I don't have the benefit of not having to work. I was insulted by being told that I'm not available twenty-four-seven. I have to work for a living. And that's a direct insult to all the working men and women that live in the city of Hawthorne. I have to get up and go to work from seven-thirty to two-thirty. I have to teach at night. I had to pick up another job to be able to pay my bills. I don't have the luxury of using government money through my nonprofits to be able to profit and do what I can, what I need to do. So, I take offense for that. And yes, I reflect what the Hawthorne residents are. They're working men and women that have to go to work. Sometimes they can't even come to council to be able to express their ideas. That's exactly why you had this meeting today at three-thirty because you didn't want those people to come and express themselves. And if you listen to Councilmember Montero's words, he tells you exactly what the plans. It's all about salaries. Are you finished laughing?
No, you were joking.
No, I'm a joke. I think we need to be careful with that. All right.
Going to be careful because if you
No, so let me finish my comments. Let me finish my comments.
Don't try to come back to me.
Let's finish my comments.
I'm telling you.
I give you your time, give me my space.
You have been the leader of this city since two thousand nine.
Ding ding, go ahead.
Councilmember Montero today, can you stop, please? Obviously, if you keep interrupting, it's because there's some fault in what you say. What you heard very carefully from his mouth was, oh, it's not about salaries. It's not about my pocketbook. It's not about this. What you heard, let me remind you what he said. I will guarantee that no one on this council brings this back for three months for a salary vote to the residents. I did not hear one hundred percent commitment against salaries. You heard it from him. It's on the record. He can't go back and change it. That's the intention. When you get heated up and you start like, you're not knowing what you're saying, keep on talking.
That's your interpretation. That's your interpretation.
You, you, can you let me speak?
You go back to school and learn the language.
Okay, let's go.
I need to go back to school and learn the language? Am I illiterate? Are you calling me illiterate, sir? Can you give me my space and let me speak? You're interrupting me. I don't interrupt you. It is about salaries. I guarantee you, three months, at a minimum of three months, it won't go back out to the voters. So, that's already been discussed. That might be the ruse for you. We'll see with this Fox fake town halls or whatever working sessions that they're going to have. It's all about salaries. It's still a no on my part. And we need to move forward and just defeat this at the ballot box and remind you who voted for it. We can't have people like Councilmember Montero insulting people up here, his colleagues, thinking he's smarter than us, that we can't read, that we can't interpret this stuff and that we can't represent you. You know what? I'm smart enough to know that the residents don't want it and that they voted no for it and not to do it again. That's it.
To the chair. So, it's obviously been voted on. It's already been, you know, moved to go to its next steps, right? There's a timeline that we're looking at. And I don't know if the general public received the timeline. Do they have a timeline?
No, they do not.
Okay, let's make it available through the city clerk's office. And you could post possibly a flyer outside, the same one we have, just to show a timeline so that folks know where we're at in the process. So, at any given time, when there's a proposition that's to be put before the voters, there has to be, obviously, it to be on the agenda and then full discussion on whether or not it's something that the majority of the council wants done. The majority is a three vote out of the five. That's a majority. The last couple of years, when it went forward to the voters, there was three, three council members that voted for it to go to, to go as an initiative on the ballot so that it could be voted on by the people, by the people. The only way you're going to know whether or not the people, the voter approves a proposition on the ballot is by it being voted by the people. So, there was, there was some language in it that most will say today that they didn't vote on it because it was, it was salary-driven. It was a high salary-driven. I agree. But the only way for the people to vote on it, their opinion on whether or not they were for it or against, is for it to be put on a ballot. And so, again, it's going to be put before the people on the ballot. And you're going to hear opposition. You're going to hear support. And you're going to hear language on those two pros and cons. And for anyone to allude on whether or not you trust your council members, that's an insult. Okay? Because I speak to constituents all the time. And I tell constituents all the time to call me. And they know my phone number. They have my email address. And I'm constantly talking to people. So, I don't think it's necessarily a trust issue. I believe mainly that it's a way to persuade voters to not be in contact with their elected officials, to ask them personally whether or not, how they feel about the item. And so, that's my thing. My opinion is to please reach out, to call and to inquire and to be informed. That's what I want folks to be. Inquired, reach out and be informed. And not to be persuaded to not reach out to us. Because what happens there is just a sense of just tearing apart people and putting people against one another. And that's something that we shouldn't do. We have passion. Our passion, my passion, might not be your passion. Your passion might not be my passion. But at the end of the day, you don't use words and things to persuade individuals to come up against one another and be fighting amongst one another. So, I don't want that to happen here. I look forward to the transparency. I look forward to the town hall meetings. I look forward to the discussions that are going to be taking place. This council chambers today doesn't have the full voice of the potential voters. This is not even half of the voters, not even a third of the voters that vote. So, there is a lot more people that don't even have a clue as to what we're doing here today. So, having said that, I don't, I don't want to, you know, again, put negative light on something that could be positive. I believe this could maybe be positive for us. I say maybe because there's still a lot of consulting. There's still a lot of things that we need to understand. What are some things that we can do as a charter city? What are some things that we still would have to abide by the general laws of the state? There's mandates, but how far does those mandates go when you're a charter city or not? So, there's still a lot of things that are not known. There's language that's going to be discussed on language that's going to be put on the proposition on the ballot as to what would, you know, the council's choices be with regards to selection of commissions? You know, discussion on rotating mayor. There's things that people don't understand, people don't know because we haven't had that discussion yet. And some of the stuff that's going to be discussed is going to be something that maybe some council members here don't want to happen. So, there has to be full transparency. And I'm going to leave it to the consultants and to the attorneys. I want to be educated on it. I want to understand what we can do as a charter. What are the myths that we I want to understand what we can do as a charter, what are the myths that we cannot do even if we are a charter. Uh, I also want to understand, um, from those that I've spoken to in our city departments and agency, including the, the police department, uh, who actually told me that they would want to be a charter city. And this is coming from the police department. So this was, again, I've been asking and inquiring and, um, how better than to get those answers, but, uh, from those that work directly for the city, uh, our departments and what that would mean for those departments. So, um, again, that's what I hope. And I hope that the selection of an attorney or a consultant, uh, brings back all of that. Because I did ask some time ago for a feasibility study to be made across all cities that are currently charter, how they've benefited and, uh, all those cities that are general law and, uh, whether or not those cities have been, I would say, I wouldn't want to say stagnant, but I would say, uh, you know, having some, some challenges. So that, that, I, I look forward to that. I want to truly understand how a charter city could benefit, um, our city and how it's benefited other cities. Uh, with regards to eminent domain, I'm not familiar with that. With regards to, say for instance, um, things that we tried to bring to the city and Councilmember Montero's right, we at one time were looking at Angel City Football Club, a soccer, first women's soccer league to come to the city and we were looking at a location and we were told we couldn't do it, uh, because of certain, um, propositions that, uh, locked us into what it currently, um, you know, is as it is today. So there's, there's a lot of different things, um, that I look forward to having in discussion. I, I, I ask all those that are watching from home, I don't even know if this is on, on channel twenty-two. Okay, yes, it is. If you're watching from home, please, uh, reach out to us, please call us, please talk to us, uh, so that you could fully understand. But most importantly, please participate in the town hall hearings. That's what the hearings are for. It's for you to come out, sit, listen, learn, but more importantly, provide your, um, recommendations, comments or otherwise. But, um, you must participate so that we could, uh, have a full engaging city on a potential, uh, charter ballot, uh, measure. Okay?
Alright, so if there's nothing further.
To the chair.
Oh, you still want to?
I want to make one statement because.
Can I finish?
Oh, I thought you were finished.
Yeah, no.
It seemed like transitioning, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just want to thank in advance, um, our leaders in our, um, our leadership, which is Vaughn, uh, Robert. Uh, I want to thank, um, department heads like channel twenty-two and all of those that have to make, um, you know, uh, things, uh, here on the council chambers available to the people and that's what matters most. And to our city clerk, thank you for, uh, being our city clerk and you're gonna be, uh, doing a lot of task just looking at all the timeline, but that's gonna be made available to you. And, um, you know, I, I hope that we could, we could really, really have an engaging conversation in spite of ourselves, in spite of our personal, uh, you know, feelings and really look out for what's best for the city on how we could move the city forward and how it could benefit us. Because at the end of the day, we are growing. Uh, we're gonna be getting a new civic center. This is gonna be a new city hall. We're gonna be getting a new, uh, senior center. And so all of that is important when we talk about something anew. And when we talk of, of, uh, anew, we're talking about a potential, uh, charter, uh, change to our general law and, uh, bringing it to the people so that the people can vote on what they feel is best for the city. Okay? So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a statement that is going, is going to hurt somebody's feeling, but I'm compelling to tell you the truth. Because like I said, I'm a very transparent person. As you know, nine months ago, I was running for the state senate. And when I launched my campaign, Mr. Mayor came to my event and said good thought about me and say, you know, was in favor. Then a few weeks later, we have a meeting, he called for a meeting, Atamadichi, and he's told me, and I have witnessed, that the only way he was going to support me for the state senate, if I promised him that I will vote no on charter city in the future. And I told him, Mr. Mayor, then you can keep your endorsement because I, I'm not a guy that will sell the city for my own benefit. That's the guy that I am and I, I know who am I. And this charter city does not benefit me in, in nothing way. But I'm saying I'm doing it because I was elected to protect the city. And that's my duty to serve you, only you and God, not for the interests of others. And that note, you guys have a great weekend.
Wow, that was a lot. Actually, thank you for bringing that up because I don't think you understand, the more you talk, the more you expose yourself, man. Let's, let's, uh, let's. Okay? Alright, so very good point. If I'm not, if we don't agree philosophically on things, why am I going to support somebody for state senate or higher office? Why would I? The charter's bad? Uh, it's not a good idea? You, I learned from the first time, we made a mistake, I made a mistake and even putting it on the ballot. But like I said, if you put, if you make that same mistake twice, then that's pretty, that's lunacy, right? So exactly, I didn't give him my endorsement. So the type of person, he's not even here to outrespond, but the type of person that that he is, is the type that even despite not, me not giving him my endorsement, he still used my endorsement in two mailers that he put out. How many of you guys saw that? Right? Not in your heads, you saw that. So over here, this whole little thing, right? So the more you, the more and more you try to sell something to the residents, the, it's like a car dealer, the more and more you try to sell something to the residents, the more and more you should start realizing that it's probably a lemon. So the more and more you tell somebody that I have integrity, that I'm honest, that I care about you guys and trying to repeat that over, there's something wrong behind that. So that's it. Let's just move on, uh, deal with this whole thing later, okay? No on the charter, folks. If there's nothing further from council members or staff, this meeting is adjourned at four-twenty-nine.